All right, shall we get the party started? All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Karen, roll call, please.
We'll start with the pledge, Jim.
Yeah, I can get that ordered now, don't I? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we'll take roll call, please.
Mike.
Here.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
John.
Karen.
You.
We're without John tonight. Next up is then the citizen comments. We have this spot reserved beginning and the end of the meeting. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council prior to the agenda. Hearing nothing, we will move on. I think I do need to also ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Doug, aye.
Chair, aye.
Chair, aye.
Mike, aye.
Motion carries with four. So, we'll jump right into the consent agenda with the minutes from February 23rd, regular meeting and work session, February treasurer's report, bills receipts, and consent vote. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, that. Doug, aye.
Chair, aye.
Chair, aye.
Mike, aye.
Motion carries with four. And we very efficiently move right into the Piastor Community Center update.
Yeah, do you guys have any question on what is here? I think the biggest thing with COVID reopening phase is we're kind of getting back to, I'll say normal, but some semblance of normalcy. And then what I don't have on here is the vaccine clinics that we had. I think when I did it, we thought it was set in stone. So, we did have a vaccine clinic last Friday. Have another one this Thursday. It's been awesome, awesome for Piastor, awesome for Dubuque County. It's awesome for PCC. It's been a great experience, so.
How many did they do again?
They, on Friday, they did 2,100 was the last count that I heard. So, they're looking at doing 1,900, I think, on Thursday, so.
And this will be a second vaccine spot too, right?
Yes.
They get their registration to come back?
Yep, yep. So, we'll have it on the 26th and then April 1st as well.
Great. How many registrations have you got for day camp? Any concerns on that one?
We have more already signed up than we had after COVID last year. So, no, I mean, it's definitely been a good amount of hits.
Open, good time, positive.
Yep.
Great.
It was, I was a little worried too, didn't know how it would go. It's been good.
Great.
Anything else for Stacy? Thank you, Stacy, and John, well done on the clinic. I think there was a lot of ambiguity going into that of how it would work, but it sure seemed to go extraordinarily well. There's anything else we need to talk about, assuming we're going to be doing more than just?
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, we've kind of planned about your same, you know, as soon as they heard they could get more, they asked us. We've kind of taken it as it comes. So, I tell them we're more than happy as long as we can make it work to continue doing it, so.
Okay. Anything we can do to help support those?
So, I know the volunteer list that are out there, I haven't got links to those out on the website, I would say. So, it'd be volunteers, I think, is the biggest thing for them, so they can continue to have them here.
Okay.
So, to get that link somewhere.
You can do a city text on that too, if you need them.
Do you do have that?
Yep, they have to get that link.
Not a lot of people move to the website.
And it was in the newsletter this, well, yesterday. There's a link for the signups or an email address. That was the preferred method, was sending an email.
Yeah, and I think the best part about it is after our first one, they kind of got different things. We're going to streamline some things, so they need less volunteers during certain parts of it. So, it's only going to get better. So, I'm glad the first one went well, but it's going to get streamlined even more for this one, so it's good.
So, I'm hearing the action for us is try to drum up as many volunteers as we can to send their name into the email address that's in the newsletter.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. Thank you, Stacy. Anything else community center related? If not, we'll move on to Chief Comer and the police update.
You guys have my report in front of you. The big thing that would happen over the course of the month was I grant, and I was awarded that, which, what that is, is it's that mailbox. The sheriff's office has it, another couple of other departments have it. But it's a mailbox that sits in front of the police department, and people are welcome to put in their prescription drugs inside the mailbox. Without question, they just drop it in, and then what we do with it is we would take it to an incinerator and have it destroyed. And it gets it out of people's homes that don't want to be unwanted prescriptions and helps with, you know, deter the people that have addiction problems and gets it out of their hands also. So, I think that's a good thing to have for us here. And what I'm going to do with it is I'm going to put it down at the police department. It's going to be in front of cameras, obviously with the drug issue with that. But it's going to be down at the police department. It'd be hopefully, I'll let you guys know when I get it in service, but I'm just kind of waiting on them. So, I just got awarded it, so, which is a good thing.
Great. So, we can put a word out about that. Is there any signage that goes with that?
Yep, there is signage that has to go on the mailbox. And then we'll put it on our website, we'll put it, you know, city website, we'll put it on our Facebook page. We'll get the word out, people know. We do get handled, people that ask quite often, you know, if we do accept it. We do accept it without the mailbox, we'll just take it for them. They just have to find us and we'll take it for them. If you have anybody that wants to get rid of it, we'll gladly take it for them, get rid of it.
Very good. Seems like a great amenity. Anything else for Chief Comer? Thank you, Mike. We'll move into Public Works then. Sorry, Dean, I don't think yours is going to go as fast as the last two.
I think we can speed right through it. Does anybody have any questions on anything on the reports? Otherwise, the only thing I want to add is some excitement we have in town is the new college suites has actually started this week. So, be a little bit of construction entertainment going on up there throughout the summer, winter, and next summer, so.
A solid NICC care at the parking lot too, or was that part of college suite?
So, that would probably be college suites, because actually, NICC is actually going to push off the roundabout. They were going to install this year, that's getting pushed off until next year now. The construction that takes place with the suites going on and the fact that they have to do the addition out the west side yet, so they don't want to have too big a mess. They still want the entrance to be available there for. So, they decided to push the actual roundabout off until next year. Other than that, the only thing I have, I sent Whitney a link on, just got some footage on drone footage, figuring that we're six months into the wastewater project now. Thought I'd bring that to your guys' attention just to see what, you know, construction's taking place up there and just kind of give everybody an idea on the progress that's taking place up there, I guess.
So, what part is that oval pad going to be?
So, that'd be the oxidation ditch. Are the two small ones that, the two small ones on the, that goes being passed. The one with the structure inside the structure, the octagon shaped one, that'd be the oxidation ditch. The other two small ones would be the clarifiers. The big square one off to the left that just went off the screen there, that'd be the aerobic digester.
That's cool to see.
That is, that's exciting. That's come
Still snowing the ground, so that didn't happen today. It actually took place last Thursday. Yeah, yeah, I didn't get it quite in time for, I had to get it off to Karen by noon there, but I think they sent me that link, it might have been Friday, actually, so, yeah. And I just wanted to give you guys an update, six months into the game, and show you what progress is actually taking place up there.
Can we put that on our webpage?
Still on or ahead of schedule?
I think we're right on schedule, yeah. I hate to say ahead of schedule, because throw one little glitch in the weather or something like that and put everybody behind and everybody be in question. So, I'm going to say right on schedule.
That's a good answer.
Within reason. Let's go that route.
All right. Sure is. And Matt's progress on his certification versus the completion date, we're still on track there too?
Yep. He's been doing some studying and stuff like that, yeah.
Great. Anything else for Dean? All right, don't go far, because I think we have some other questions for you. But the next one on the agenda item then is the pay application number six. So, we've got payment of 116,918, is that right?
Right.
And I'm reading between the lines, Dean, you're satisfied with the progress?
Yep.
So, we just need a motion to approve that if there's no discussion?
I'll make a motion for 116,918 for payment number six.
Second. Doug, aye.
Chair, aye.
Chair, aye.
Mike, aye.
Motion carries with four. And next up is the setting a bid opening date at a public hearing date, bid opening and hearing date for Enterprise Drive and a gravity sewer improvement project. We're looking for April 13th. Well, April 8th would be the bid opening, April 13th would be the public hearing.
Make the motion to set the opening of the bids on April 8th and April 13th for the public hearing. Second. Doug, aye.
Chair, aye.
Mike, aye.
Motion carries with four. And we've got a resolution providing listed transportation priorities for the next three years that are eligible for the Dubuque County Rural County Transportation Program, or RCTP funding. Want to give this just a sentence or two of narrative?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a resolution that's required to be, we get a grant application and it just assures the granting agency, which in this case is the county, that the council is fully on board and supportive of the project. So, we know we have more than enough specific grant roadworks that does have countywide implications, so we are including four of those on this resolution. This year, the application will be submitted for the Cox Spring project. And so, that's, the next resolution also just authorizes our submission of the application. $25,000 is the max award. I really don't have a good feel for how much or if we'll get it, but we're going to, going to throw it in, positive, see what happens.
So, understanding there's two motions we go through. The first one's approving the list, approving the resolution that defines four projects in the list. And then the second resolution will be authorizing the filing. We have a motion on the list.
Motion for the list. Second, that. Doug, aye.
Mike, aye.
Motion carries with four, and then we can right away do a resolution authorizing the filing of that seven.
I'll make a motion to authorize the file of that list.
Second, that. Doug, aye.
Chair, aye.
Chair, aye.
Mike, aye.
And motion carries with four. So, where the other part of Public Works, there may be two items here that are worth a little bit of time while we're in the Public Works section. One of those being the Highway 20 lift station. I believe we've got some technical support here from V and K to guide that discussion. And then I've also got here that might be worth our time to talk just a little bit about Waters Edge, the comprehensive planning, and the utilities that are in the way right now, or at least perceived to be in the way for the pond or the lake that we're looking at. So, if we're good with it, let's talk about the Highway 20 lift station first.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some procedural things that have to occur a little bit later with the public hearing, but we did receive bids last week. We've received three bids. I'll let Jake summarize what those are, because we already have a list of those. We need, Jake's also been investigating our experience with particular low bidder and whether they would share that. And then I think we should have a discussion whether we want to work with a low bidder and what are our options moving forward. So, Jake's going to summarize what's shared. So, yesterday afternoon, we received three bids, both subject project, the low bidder being Boomerang Corporation. The second low bidder was top grade excavating. Third being sports construction. Me, Sharon Kim, does have experience with Boomerang. We have, I'd say, four current projects with them right now. And I have reached out to project managers out of our Corville, Des Moines, and Sierra Rapids offices and gave what their experience has been with them and the consensuses, well, not the consensus, but some of the issues that they've been running to is related to schedule. So, timeliness and completing project. I also followed up with a bonding company today. There's no issues or, you know, I guess claims against their bonds that, you know, sort of not those sort of things. So, you know, I guess just trying to get perspective on these current jobs in regards to timeliness and quality of work. I have not heard any issues with the quality of work if it's scheduled. So, it's more procedural in nature. All three bids were under the engineer testament. I think the low was about, I think 24%. Yeah, so decent gap between the, they have the next two bidders.
Where are they from?
The animals. I know.
They are, maybe.
So, yeah, like I said, you know, after the bid opening, Dean had shared some, you know, I guess some thoughts, and so I did some labor in the meantime and tried to track down some of that information. So, like I said, you know, to our dollars, there hasn't been any jobs in the state where they left and not completed the work more, I guess, than far as our dollars.
Okay.
And then I know, did you get any feedback with attorney, kind of, you'd reached out?
I did, I just loaded it into the administrative content of the other in Public Works. So, and I had a extended conversation with Doug, we're working with Doug Ernman now. So, in great ways situations, obviously, because he's been there. So, he provided a memo, just kind of lays out the options. I mean, he did say that statutorily, you know, the city has the ability to determine who's a responsible bidder. That's by nature kind of a gray area, so you have some latitude there, but it kind of swings both ways. So, he really just provided this as kind of a, you know, baseline for, in his experience, you know, as an you know, he advised, I should back up to say that I think, you know, we've had the fortune of working with really good contractors. Unfortunately, that's, you know, just as we're growing and there's a lot of work to be done here, there's a lot of money to be made here, we're going to start seeing a lot of different contractors from further away than that part of the, and just to be at home. So, you know, he's been in situations like this before. Again, he really just wanted to emphasize you have things you can do and options, but we also have a good team in place. I mean, obviously, those dollars are valuable. They're $170,000 under the next lowest bidder, so we can sort of take that. I mean, that can, you could take that to mean a couple of different things. So, there's sort of a balance here. We do think because of their scheduling issues, from what I understand, and I know they also, they're performing a job in Montes when my former committee now. So, when I was in the car today, I talked to Brett Warden, who is our sewer superintendent. You know, they're on a project that I was supposed to wrap up in July, they're still there. So, they just, they run very, I don't think that's, that's pretty black and white from everybody you can talk to. So, they're getting there, it's just can be slow and burdensome. And I think, I mean, Dean probably got more technical information to share, but yeah, from a legal perspective, Doug's outlined where you guys can take this. But again, it really comes down to a balance in terms of how much supervision and, you know, follow, we want to continually have with Boomerang to make sure that product stays online, how much of that you're willing to undergo and how much risk you're willing to take on in terms of looking at other options aside from the apparently better. I mean, certainly, it's a difficult path. It's not, I wouldn't be correct in saying it absolutely can't be done sometimes, because that's not the truth, but it's not fun times usually. Dean, you want to share your?
So, I guess first of all, my question would be is what did we allow for working days?
November or something, very exact, November 30th, so.
And then, you know, as well known, and getting quite a bit of feedback as far as people around the area, contractors and such, you know, is, you know, the fact of not meeting completion date is a major concern, obviously. You know, this is a project that's going to get started. I prefer to see it get completed this year and meet this completion date unless there's actual legit reasons, so.
We don't have to make a decision on this tonight, right?
We actually can't yet. That's what the public hearing is at 6 o'clock. So, we'll talk about this again at 6 and have the public input portion then. While we've got
But no, you don't have to award the contract.
Yeah, our choices would be to award it, to table it, or, well, we could award it to any of the three, right?
No. You have to award to you believe the lowest responsible responsive bidder.
Okay.
And if you determine that Boomerang is not that, you have some procedural things you have to go through to declare that and then go to the next one. My recommendation would be this, there are some, Dean has some reservations, they're not unfounded, they have schedule issues, that's, but that is, that in two, in and of itself is not enough to declare them not responsible. I think you'd have a hard time declaring them not responsible. I think your path forward is either to award it to them or to project at all and figure out how to rebid it, redo it, that there's some rules along that. As Whitney stated, there's a pretty big gap between they have the next lowest bidder. And I'll just share my experience, Doug, I'm sure you've got it in instruction. Dean, I know it does, I wish, Dean actually did this job. He's one of my favorite contractors, who's on the side of the world, but there is no perfect contractor, there's no perfect engineer, there's no perfect project. When you use the word risk, you have $175,000 between a low bidder and a second bidder. One of my former mentors isn't employed anymore, he's retired, basically, said you, a contractor can screw a lot to make up that $175,000. Build be cheaper than the second. What you're talking about is someone that has a history of being late, can you accept that? And perhaps it takes a little bit more effort on the city's part, on our part, to make sure the quality is there. And you can do an awful lot of $175,000 delta. So, that's really what you're leaning, is that. But your path forward is to award that, to, in my opinion, that's my recommendation, because more than determining to be not responsible. Or, I think, to not award it at all and figure out what the path forward looks like.
So, with that, I appreciate that, thanks for the guidance there. What is in the contract, as far, is there anything in the contract as far as a performance clause around that end date?
Yeah, there's a liquidated damages clause that every construction contract typically has. I suspect you guys have been in those situations in the past. I'm not aware of them, but most have. They're always standing very immediately. Sometimes there is a true, there's a true damage that you have to prove to be able to enforce that with the payment covenant. It's not just punitive for being late. There has to be other circumstances. It always involves injuries. More times than not, it gets resolved and negotiated before that. And so, it's there to try to provide an impetus for the contractor to get done on time. You know, I gave this example to Whitney yesterday when we were talking. You know, in this case, one of the damages that you can envision is you have an undersized lift station that exists out there right now. We know that, that's why we're doing the project. If we get a rainy drought, it overwhelms that particular lift station, the sewer banks up, and there's fines and stuff like that. Pretty easy to identify that damage, because it is getting done on time. But just because they went into December, it's pretty hard, but not impossible. But just know that there's a fight there, there's a negotiation there, there's the threat of the liquidated damages. Another fairly easy damaged one, when they won't be on a deadline, is you're continuing to pay me as the construction goes on. So, I'm going to send you a bill from the time after that date, that's a damage, that's a So, that's one of the first ones you usually go after, because you have multiple special needs that you send down, and they go beyond that. So, and that's a very simple, narrow, it's a very simple and narrow examples of what is a much larger complex thing, that's kind of endless practice.
Do they have any projects going on close by? Excuse me? Do they have any projects going on close by?
Not with us, those are close to them, not that kind of lot, it's not going to be all that far away. They travel, they have a pretty good travel radius of where they go to the projects.
Might as well, two and a half.
Yeah. So, you know, they, they're not an unrevenueable contractor. They don't have a history of lawsuits and things like that that would be easy to point to to say that you're not responsible. Their biggest not quite honestly is their timeliness and perhaps maybe some procedural things that, as the project goes on, that are certainly useless and take time of your staff and us. But again, I've twice in my career had to go to court to try to determine whether somebody was not It's a very high bar that it is. The law certainly favors the contractors most of the time.
Dean, my next question then is to you, if it runs late, what's the impact to the city? What's the foreseeable impact?
The impact for the city is, depending on project Phase Two of the project, Enterprise Drive, being completed prior to the lift station, it's going to consist of some rerouting of some pipe, which is going to add an extra on our part as far as whatever contractor gets Phase Two. Do we have an estimated cost as far as liquidated damages, as far as excessive days, 500? And that's okay? Or that's just an estimated cost?
That's what the contract says. Now, if you were to incur damages beyond the liquidated damages, I think that's a separate lawsuit. I think that's a separate lawsuit beyond the terms of the contracts, if something were to happen, it was catastrophic, you'd be, you'd be trying to pursue remedies outside of the contract.
So if we, during our public hearing, if we decide not to award it tonight, can we push it off for two weeks? Will that affect anything as far as timelines?
I'm just, I, I will say one thing, Doug, if we were to choose to push it back two weeks, we may consider to push the completion date back a couple, just to be fair. But that'll probably be it.
I, I, I'm just, I, I just like doing research on contractors that's coming on my facility beforehand, and I would expect Dean would want to do some research before new contract. And I'm not saying that they're bad or anything, it's just.
It's due diligence, yeah, and, you know, when we talked about the local contractors, and I've worked across the country, honestly, where I work most, really blessed with a high number of good contractors, and we typically know who they are, we know their families, we know, it's, it's when you get some of the different around here, you need enough time to do that due diligence. We didn't want to cut it in the day that we had here, but yeah, if you wanted time to do some more, you certainly could do that. There's a great deal that's known about that right now, and, and a little bit more time, we could add some more, but probably not significantly more, but certainly fair. I had, actually Jake looked that up today, how long has that been due, or we would have to certainly to do that?
Only two weeks, would we be allowed to extend it to award both projects at the same time when we, when we?
I think it was 45 days.
So yes. You're pushing it real close.
It would be, it would, within, it'd be within the days.
Within hours.
What?
Within hours.
45 days or 45 days?
More importantly though, it's such a project in the winter, it's a problem.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're really kind of into that anyhow, I mean, if, if I have to play this thing forward, they're going to hit us a standard completion date in November, December, we're going to have to extend the final completion date because we can't ask them to plant grass in December. And some cleaning stuff, that's pretty common when that happens too, but, you know, whether you complete on the 11th or 15th through December 15th, is it's a huge difference from a weather perspective probably, something about other factors that we try to anticipate, you know, they, they certainly come into play, but, you know, you wouldn't anticipate that 30 days making a huge difference at this point, would you agree with me?
I would agree 100%, especially if you're, if you're pushing yourself that tight, that slim, considering you're getting into that time of year. I mean, obviously, anybody in the area is going to know that your time's getting limited, your days are shorter, so, I mean, if you're pushing yourself that slim, there's obvious reasons.
Well, and the nature of this project is you've got, you know, roughly several thousand feet of piping work that's going to be done, a lot of the weather's good. You've got some structures to get, a lot of the weather's good, and there's an awful lot of underground work that could happen when the ground's frozen. So, and realistically, we're ordering parts that aren't going to come for 16 weeks, you know, like the pumps are that far out and some equipment and that. So there's, there's things that are going to get done kind of at the 11th hour, but that's just a function of what we're doing. A lot of it should be done, probably shouldn't be done, would be done privately.
And what we want, well, Enterprise will need to get finished when it's warm?
Enterprise will definitely have to be finished when it's warm, considering there's paving included on Enterprise Drive.
No, I mean, I think that, I don't know, I want to take on the lab two we have, I also don't want to, if there's, I'm not sure what we gain by that, I guess, my question.
By putting them together?
By waiting 30 days to approve this.
Especially if we don't have any leg to stand on.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we, if there's something we need to do, I think we should take the bid, but, and that, that can sort it out later. I don't want to, I don't want to be like the, it always drives my husband nuts, when he tends to takes a timeout to try to save time to get the ball back, and then they usually end up losing the game that way. I just want to make sure we don't accidentally shoot ourselves in the foot, because we know they're going to take every day of the contract and that's all. We totally know that, right?
Probably, yeah, so I, you know, fast forwarding, addressing your concern, and as well as your, and I can say less than two weeks, and in two weeks, you need two more weeks, you still can do that, which would put you about where the bid opens. And, and also still be within the 45 days of the bidding to do that. I think to your point, what are you going to learn in that second two weeks that, that helps you make that decision?
Right, or even now, Dean doesn't need to know anything else about Boomerang, do you? You know everything we do know. But yeah, but I can definitely see some value in the extra couple of weeks, I just.
Is there something we can put into the Enterprise Drive bid opening or bid contract or whatever to make it so if we do award it to this person Boomerang, that they have to have things squared away in order for that to work correctly? Do you know what I mean? So there is a, a.
Coordinate between the two.
There's, there is some coordination and connection at the end, that's, you know, when we broke these out into two separate products, we tried to make sure that if one was, you know, going further ahead than the other, we, you know, we weren't held up by each other, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and if that manual could easily be shifted from one contract to the other if someone was there before, I believe, but, that's a great question.
Just to try and coordinate the issue that you see, right?
Yeah.
Take care of it, because it doesn't sound like we have anything we can do with Boomerang, right? Bid openings are bid opening, except the lowest bid.
Yeah, like I said, you, you have two options, to award the project to them, or go and award the project at all and go back up for a rebid, but we have, there's laws against that, we have to either change the project or we have to wait a significant amount of time. And officially choose not to award the project because of who was low, and then put the exact same project out across your fingers, if they don't get it. It happens, but that's what the, the period of time is intended to be, to maybe be something different.
We're already talking about a time period, right?
We could break that, we could break that actual project up into two.
We absolutely could.
We got the lift station being one. You know, that would be another.
That would qualify me actually, yeah, but, um, yeah.
And just a little more background on, excuse me, the projects that I mentioned that we're currently working with and are, you know, more elaborate than this lift station, you know, underground hiking job there. You know, there's a lot more moving pieces and, you know, scheduling, concrete, buildings to construct, whereas, you know, I guess just for a little more background information.
So yeah, we've had some anecdotal evidence anyway of them, of there's a, more of a concern of timeliness with Boomerang than with the other two that bid it, from, based on our experience with those two. I presume there's also plenty of projects that have been completed on time by Boomerang as well?
I would assume so, probably others as well, it's, it's not, you know, I, I, how do I say this? I, I've done this a long time, and there's a lot, there's a lot of projects, if not most, that go over a little bit. You know, the, I can't think of too many where that date was a hard date. It literally has to be done by this date, or we lose knowing that, or something like that, some, you know, it happens. And, and I don't, you know, I don't know how to, how to say it other than that, it, it just happens, and you can anticipate in a high likelihood with this contractor it going long, but I don't know that it has a huge consequence on the project. But I will say this, it will procedurally and administratively during the project, take a little bit more effort, probably. Again, not in the world, I mean, you, you have one of the best full works directors from a construction standpoint that, that I know of, right? I, I have a lot of confidence myself, my staff, to help guide that, you've got a capable administrative staff. They've had administrative challenges with contractors before, and, and you just work through that, it's just kind of part of the deal. But if there are anybody who have reservations and strong feelings, you just, you know, move forward, but you, you have the numbers there, I can only hear two, you better gather your voice. So I just want to lay out the facts so you're making an informed decision as to how, how to, and I'm cool with it, I really am, like, I get it, I, I, I don't want it to be a difficult project in as much as anybody else. But I also don't ever want to spend more than I have to, and there's $175,000 stayed there with the difference between the low and the second. Is that worth going on and worth having an administrative change, that's what I'm getting the question.
Just, just one of the things I ran over in the past was, where do you go with low bid, these are so much lower. Seems like the change orders come in because they know where that second low bid was at.
And then, you know, you can probably expect the value of certain things if there's a change order for, they'll try to claw some of that back, but again, this isn't my first rodeo, Dean knows effort is there, and you know, those change orders are to go, I mean, unless they have a unit price bid in there, which is, you know, the quantity has just changed and the prices are established, so, again, that's what you described, Doug, is, is the very specific way of what I said as far as the administrative changes.
So we're talking about the character of this project, Jacob, you, you characterize it as being maybe relatively straightforward compared to other more complicated projects?
Well, just based on the projects that I've experienced with Boomerang currently, you know, and, you know, they're having to coordinate big concrete pours, whereas this is, you know, precast structures, a prefabricated control building, you know, I guess it's a lot more pieces coming in than having to be constructed on site, if that makes sense.
Is it reasonable to interpret that as, as being a lower risk of the need for a lot of change orders?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, because they're prefabricated pieces of equipment that, you know, and specified and shown in drawings, so, yeah, that'd be a assumption.
I haven't found an engineer or a construction outfit that can't come up with the change orders.
Not, but.
So actually, this isn't a big project for them, is what you're saying here, they're usually dealing, you know, bigger projects.
It's going to be a challenging project, it's going to be extremely wet, in all locations, the location of the, the lift station, throughout the whole installation of the pipe, the underground, it's, it's going to be very challenging, and that's.
For anybody though, you assume.
Proof of.
And that's why we didn't get many bids.
Yeah, and that's, that's the real factor why there was a lot of contractors that didn't bid it, I mean, it's going to be very challenging.
So how does that?
And even though a bit, it knew it, and, and that's where the difference in, in cost comes into play, is the de-watering, the extra steps that you have to take to, you know, provide a good completed project.
Is it solely because of the pot?
It's just a wet area, you know.
That whole area is really.
That whole area is wet.
So did they put the rock in the bid, all the extra rock they'll need?
I mean, yeah, bedding, pipe bedding, I mean, I, I don't know what spec'd out as far as pipe bedding, I hope inch clean.
Yeah, the bedding would be water, you have changes to de-watering to get it in.
Correct.
So in the construction.
But the de-watering, I mean, I'm assuming there's something in the specs as far as, the de-watering, I mean, it's not going to be an extra.
Yeah, can the, like, the, the project in my former community is five times the dollar amount, that's just low on my floor, so I don't know if you, you think it's.
Yeah, I think it's fair to characterize it as a challenging project, but not a, a difficult project, for that, it has some challenging elements, but in fact, the difficult thing is the rubber compiles. It's not a complex project, but it has some challenges, elements to it.
Was there issues in that project that you spoke of with these guys?
Yeah, yeah, there, but, and then, so the schedule would be done last July, but I do know COVID has presented some massive supply chain issues, I mean, that's, and so it's really, that's where it fell apart in terms of any sort of liquidating, which really couldn't assess how the material delay affected their scheduling. And then once you get into the, the winter, it just kind of held up, but that, I mean, that was a long project too. I don't know, V and K was on that project, so I, I mean, that's a big, you know, it's just like our plan, so that's a long project.
And Dean, our existing lift station will continue to be functional up until the new, and, well, up until the new one is proven to be working?
Yeah.
Adequately, right? So back to the schedule, I'm just looking at the impact.
We're going to get concerned of, of the new impact, or the new, or the old lift station being impacted more so when, you know, the commercial development takes place over there, you know, when that commercial area is filled up.
So it's purely a competitive.
At this point in time, I mean, yeah, it's perfectly fine.
We have two pumps left for down there too then?
There are two pumps in there.
Oh, yeah, we have two more pumps, didn't we have four down there for some reason, I'm thinking we had four.
Four remaining.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was purely a discussion element right now. We'll have another opportunity to talk through that at six o'clock, the public hearing as well, before we decide what the motion will be for that bid. Any other, if I can ask, you seem to have some experience with Boomerang, do you have a perspective to share that would be helpful?
I used them very, very early in their, their careers, because they were local people, and they were a little better, and we've had experience with them. Project got done, but in no time, but they've really grown, and like a lot of contractors that are going, finding people is the issue. But I, in all the years, I've never heard anything where another city told me, or that company in your town had a formidable job, I've never heard that, but I, I have heard, yes, that it takes longer than that, but I think it's just a matter of finding people, but that's kind of not a problem. Everything is finding good workers.
But might I add, if you're short-staffed, that'd be one, one of the main reasons that you don't take on more work. And, I mean, so, the way I look at it, for them, if they're going to use that for an excuse, then it should have, for the fact that they should have fought for it. Especially leaving $170,000 underneath the second bidder, so, I mean, the prior construction name of Boomerang, Rick Cliff did work in town, they actually did the booster station. I feel that the I feel that is terrible. Whether they stepped up their performance, that's something I can't speak for. But I will say the booster station is a nice one.
What, what was it that you said was terrible?
The booster station.
What about it?
Just, just the appearance of it, I mean, the floor, there might be six drains in the floor, and there's not water that runs on one, they had to put an epoxy coating on the floor because it was such a, just such a nightmare.
Is that?
I mean, in all, in all reality, it should have been ripped out.
Was that a design issue or a construction issue?
That was a construction issue, it was a performance issue.
So that was same principle under a different business name that did that?
So therefore, I guess that's another concern of mine. Hearsay is one thing, I guess, as far as, as far as their, you know, meeting their deadlines. That can somewhat be acceptable if the performance is made up for the delay in time.
What was the name of the company then?
Rick Cliff.
Rick Cliff? And how long ago was that?
Three years maybe?
Four or five. Yeah, this is my third year, so, no, I'm just saying, it's right around that time, because this is my third, so yeah, it was up and running before me. Eighteen, we installed the pressure reducer across the road, so it was already installed then.
Okay.
Six oh years up.
For now, this is just a discussion item, like I said, we'll talk about this again at six, the public hearing board, when we get to it. Good for now? And we'll, if we could, Whitney would.
Should we hop to Pat and then maybe circle back, or do you not think so?
No, that's probably a good idea, you're respectful of your time.
I'm fine, I don't know. Actually, I was going to ask you, I can reach you in. Actually, I was going to ask you, I can be two minutes or if you really want to, if this has to be on the map stack, I'd probably need forty-five minutes if you want to get this going right away. If you're a no rush, I only need a couple minutes.
Well, let's dive into that. It's very important to us. So, yeah, so what we'll do is we'll come back to the sewer discussion, but we'll move into six eight and we'll talk about, uh, our agreement with Pat Callahan of Callahan Municipal Consultants for an administrators.
Well, just let me ask you, is is this something that you want to move forward on very quickly? Or is it something that you're in no hurry?
We'd like to move quickly.
Okay, okay, then we'll get started and then we'll take a break and then we'll come back. So, and I'm going to give you some information here tonight, um, and you can take it home if you can read it later. The next time I'm back, we'll go over a little more detail. I like to start out with this kind of little packet so you know what to expect going forward, especially those of you, I think, Karen, you were did part of this last time and Jerry, you were part of it and.
John's opinion tonight, he was.
Okay, all right, so, um, so I'm going to kind of give you just a quick overview of what this process is all about and then, um, see what questions you might have. What I'll do tonight is just kind of give you a quick overview of the process and then you can tell me if there's any part of the process you want to change. And, uh, the other thing we'll do is if you're, like, like Mayor said, if you want to move forward very quickly, then there's some key dates, meaning you'll lock in on your schedules because once we start moving forward, uh, in order to stay on schedule, uh, these dates need to go on your calendar. So I'll just kind of go through my agenda. You might have seen it in, um, I had sent it out yesterday, but the key dates we're going to talk about. Um, and then item D, I'll talk a little bit about, and that is, I'd like to have a conversation with all of you one-on-one before I get too deeply in this process. Because I want to know from you individually what kind of person we need to look for. And maybe you know potential candidates, that sort of thing. So I think you might have seen the questions I might ask. Typically, I come to the community and just have that sit-down one-on-one meeting, but lately with COVID, which, by the way, I've had both of my shots, so I'm good.
Congratulations.
One of the advantages of being old. There are not very many, but that's one. So I'm good to go. In fact, I'm starting to plan vacations again, so. But anyway, um, so I like to have that conversation and then, uh, I use that information then to help recruit candidates because I tell people this process is, it's a matter of, it's kind of like a marriage. There are no two people exactly alike. The key is to find that right connection and that right fit going forward so that you have a good working relationship. So I want to learn a little about you and I learn more about the candidates and then I can advise you who I think would be a good fit for this job and in this community as well. So, uh, that's part of that. And then the other thing I like to talk about is what level of citizen involvement do you want? Some cities want a lot of involvement, others figure, hey, we were duly elected to make this decision. We're going to move forward and we're going to make that decision. And, um, so there's no right or wrong there. The other thing I'll talk about is that community position profile that Whitney is updating. Because we did this a couple of years ago. That is my marketing tool. That's what I said with potential candidates, saying, you need to take a look at this job. This is a good community, a good position, and this profile kind of gives you an overview of the town and also what, uh, what the job entails. So the other thing we'll talk about is, um, I will get potential candidates asking me about wages and benefits. Uh, what does the benefit package look like? Is the council willing to do things like moving expenses and and that sort of thing? So I don't need definite answers on any of that tonight, but I want to introduce you to it and give you some time to think about it. Because when I come back, my next meeting with you, I'm going to need some answers on some of that stuff. Um, and then the key thing we want to do tonight is item H on the agenda, and that is to, um, finalize the advertisement for the position, which Whitney took the one we did a couple of years ago and was updated in Boris. So, uh, and but there's some blanks in there that we need to fill in. And then we need to talk a little bit about, uh, the authorization. Another key element of this whole process is, do you want to preserve the confidentiality of the people who apply? Many communities, it's not a big deal, but in this community and any community, it seems like within, oh, twenty minutes of debut, uh, you have a very aggressive newspaper that sometimes will insist on having those names of those families. That is your decision. It's not mine, it's not theirs, that's your decision. I just want to introduce you to the fact that that question has come up sometimes when I'm doing a search in the new area. It is the only one I've done searches in where it's an issue, okay? For what it's worth, and so, uh, most other cities, I keep the local newspaper informed of what's going on. Monticello is perfect, you said. I just, that's the most recent one I did. I kept the local newspaper editor informed of each step in the process. She had three, rang the call anytime she wanted to, but in the end, she understood why we didn't talk about it. She don't do the applications because you will lose probably one-fourth to one-third of your applicants when I tell them, I'm sorry, but your name is going to be in this newspaper as a result of the search. And that's when many will back off and say, no, maybe not. I, I don't, I don't really want, want it out there because I don't want my local mayor, my council, knowing I'm running this other. So, but you, you will make that decision, not me. That's, uh, and we'll talk about that as we get into this. The other thing is, I keep you updated throughout this whole process. You will be getting regular emails from me telling you what's going on, what's the last thing I did. And you are welcome to call me anytime, uh, or you're welcome to email anytime. And, uh, I, I work out of my home, so I take these calls all hours of the day and night. I might shut the phone half off by eleven o'clock at night, but if you, if you're a nice person and you want to talk to me about what I've sent you, you can call me anytime. I'm more than happy to answer any question you got and, uh, and people, and I'm used to people doing that. And the other key thing we need to talk about is kind of that next step in the process. And that's when I will bring you all the resumes and all the cover letters that I've received. And then you and I, all of us, will sit down and rank them and screen them. And then you will, each individual, you do a ranking for me where you will say, I, I'm going to give you three rankings. One is a top candidate, I think we should interview that person. A two ranking, kind of in the middle, haven't made up your mind. And a third ranking is they're not qualified, we're not going to interview that person. I'm going to take all of your scores and I'm just going to total them all and come up with a composite score on each candidate. That will be used to determine who goes on to the next step in the process. I use this ranking process all the way here from the beginning to the end so that you all have an equal say and and who it is we interview and ultimately who it is, uh, is selected for the university administrator, so. That's what I want to talk about tonight. That's about a good time for me to take a break, huh? Six o'clock?
We don't, we don't, I don't think we have a hard stop at six, right?
It doesn't happen at six.
A public hearing can be anytime after.
After six.
After six.
So we don't need to short-circuit this conversation.
Okay, well, you have, you you stop me whenever you're ready, okay? The other thing I gave you is my resume, just so you know who I am and where I'm from. I was actually born and raised about eight miles straight south of here. If you know where the Fillmore Church is?
Yep.
That's where I was born and raised, right next, it's about half mile to the west of the Fillmore Church, so. Went to high school in Cascade, uh, growing up, uh, knew, knew quite a bit about Costa, but when I was a boy, this was about a hundred and twenty people, I think, when I was growing up. I did this today, but remember coming up here and playing baseball in Babe Ruth and Junior Rangers? Which, by the way, I should let you know, tomorrow night, I'm in Farley doing the same discussion, only you are way ahead of them in terms of this position because they're just now getting into whether or not to have a position as city administrator. So I'm kind of, uh, kind of giving them a quick overview of what the position's all about. And, uh, but I'll be in Farley tomorrow night if you don't have anything better to do, if you want, if you want to hear that. So the green sheet is something for you to take home and look at, and that is just a quick overview of this whole process, starting with, you know, the position profile I talked about, uh, basically all the items that we just talked about, it gives, but it gives you a nice concise summary of what it is we're going to be doing on each step of the way. So you can take that moment and read it with you whenever you feel like it, um, and then, um, it just tells you a little bit about each step in the process, okay? The orange sheet is another item you can take home and read in your leisure. That is what's going on out there right now in Iowa and probably throughout the whole country, and that is there is a real shortage of people who want to do this job. When I was a young man in my thirties and forties and looking for to move up, because I was in Macocada, I was city manager there for about fifteen years. And if we had the opportunity to have five openings in Iowa in a given year, we were just amazed to think we had five opportunities. Well, on the backside of this, this, all the cities in twenty twenty that had openings for city manager and city administrator, and this is, this number is actually down. In two thousand, uh, sixteen, we had twenty-nine, in two thousand eighteen, twenty-six, we had twenty-seven in, uh, in twenty seventeen. These are unheard of numbers for this line of work. Um, and what's going on is, is the younger generation like Whitney, they're just not getting into this line of work for various reasons. And I talk about some of those ratings and what I've observed over the last five or ten years in this whole field, which then, it doesn't make it impossible to find people, but it certainly makes it more challenging to find people to apply. The last time we did this, um, Jerry, remember, I think we had like ten or twelve whole applications. We interviewed maybe, we didn't get any five of them. Yeah, and then we narrowed it down to two and and Whitney and, and by the way, the young gal, the gal that we interviewed at that time, she's now a city administrator in Preston, Iowa. I don't know if you knew that or not. I had, I had a call from the mayor of Preston saying, we need a city administrator. And I said, you're talking about, don't even hire me. I know this lady named Teresa who is not far from you, just hire her. And so, and if I knew someone that I'm right, right now, that would be a good for me, I'd probably just tell you that. Don't even hire me, hire that individual because I've done that thirty-four different times, so. But anyway, uh, so it all worked out in the end because she's very happy in Preston, Iowa, so. The blue sheet is what I really want to make sure that, um, I I get your okay on tonight because you're going forward, once we start this process, everybody's got to get these dates on under schedule. And so what we're looking at doing is finishing up the profile and letting you take one last look at that and get your approval. And then we would actually start putting the ads out tomorrow or the next day in some of these various publications. And then, once the profile is done, I'm going to start sending it out to potential candidates, uh, next week. And in fact, if we move forward very quickly, the time on, timing on this is very good because next week in Iowa City is the city managers' conference. And city managers and city administrators from all over the state are invited to their continuing education program at, um, at, uh, at Iowa City. And, uh, it will give me the opportunity, because I'm going to be there, I'm a speaker, my topic is the do's and don'ts of interviewing. So anybody goes through that program should not be making stupid mistakes under it. But anyway, I will be promoting the fact that you folks are looking for a city administrator. And I will, it's going to be a perfect opportunity for me to get the word out that this is a great community and a great opportunity for somebody. And even if that person that is going to apply isn't there, having a hundred city administrators out there know about you and the, you know, an opening is a plus because then they spread the word for me. Because I've been in this business for a long time and I know a lot of these folks. And so it's good that I can interact with them next week. And, uh, so we haven't had a conference in a long time and they've decided that, uh, you know, hopefully we're getting close to having COVID more under control. But they're going to, they're going to try and do it, uh, next week, so. Um, so the key, one of the key dates that I need to talk to you about is the, uh, is the date of April thirteenth. Is that a regular date, April thirteenth?
It is.
So you, you should be here anyway. What I will do is, um, I can either do it before the meeting or after the meeting. Doesn't make me a good student, I'm fine with doing it after the meeting. That's when we're going to look at all the resumes and cover letters. And one of the things I can do is scan them ahead of time and send them to your emails so you can look at them ahead of time. And then when we sit down on the thirteenth, I'm going to have you do that ranking for me. And then I'm going to share with you what I know about the candidates. Um, some of these candidates are people that I've maybe seen in others, other searches, uh, maybe people I've known for a while. If there's someone brand new, I've never met before, I'm going to call them, particularly if I think they're a good candidate and learn a little bit more about them. So I will share with you at that time what I know about these folks. And then you are going to do the ranking for me and then that ranking will determine who goes on to the next step, which is number twelve on this blue sheet, and that's the Zoom era. And that's where we will pick anywheres from four to eight. Uh, the most I've ever done is eight, it's almost too many because we do a half hour with each candidate, so. That's four hours in one evening. The fewest I've ever done is four. Uh, when we did it here, I think we did five, if I remember right, so. Um, but you'll determine what that number is. And what we'll do then is, uh, we'll schedule them every half hour on the half hour and we'll start as soon as you're ready. Um, if you start like at five o'clock, you know, we'll be done there much sooner, so. But we'll talk more about that when we get together on the, uh, on the thirteenth, so. Does anybody have any problems with the night of the twentieth to do the Zoom era? Does that work on your schedules as far as you know at this point?
It's good on mine.
Okay, well, let's jump ahead then, uh, and you're going to see all the things that we're going to be doing, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, items there. The next key date is the actual face-to-face interview. And I'm looking at doing those on the weekend of April thirtieth and May first. The key date for you is Saturday, May first, at eight o'clock in the morning. And depending on how many candidates we interview, if we interview just two, like we did last time, we're probably going to be done by then. But if we interview more, go in a little bit in the afternoon. Does anyone have a conflict with Saturday, May first? Okay, good. So kind of lock those dates in on your schedule. And then the other thing we'll do then is if we pick a candidate, if you pick a candidate that day, uh, I'd like to have a special meeting the following week to wrap it all up. And the reason I want you to move quickly is I've learned from experience that if you wait too long, there may be another city that will steal that candidate from you. Because they're probably interviewing more than just here. And so if they get another offer, in fact, I, I'm helping the city of Webster City right now. We just lost a great candidate a couple of days ago because another city offered him a job. And they were supposed to be interviewed this Saturday and they pulled out. And so the sooner we move on this, the better we are in terms of finding someone and getting them to commit to being city administrator here, so. Is there any questions on the, um, on the blue sheet and the timetable?
It doesn't look like it, no.
Okay, let's go to that pink sheet and, um, I, this is what was done the last time we did this, where I sat down with the council. Now, when I come back here on April thirteenth, I'm going to go over this blue sheet in great detail with you and make sure, uh, because the key thing obviously is that we're going to have to set the salary range tonight if we're going to move forward. But I'm going to talk to you a little bit about, uh, what candidates might expect, you know, uh, an auto allowance or, um, or mileage rate, that sort of thing. Also, I'll talk to you a little bit about vacation because some candidates, if they've been working in this, um, in, for quite a while, they don't always want to start a vacation at ground zero. They want to negotiate, maybe moving up your scale a little bit on, on, on your vacation plan. So, uh, I want to, you know, prepare you for the fact that these are some things that I see candidates ask for. Uh, same thing on sick leave. If I remember right, you folks have a great medical plan for your employees. Is that, is that still?
Still true.
That is a great selling point, by the way. Uh, I had a real problem in one of my recent areas where they do not have a good healthcare plan. And it was a real difficult thing, selling candidates to even apply. And even after I sold them on applying, then they had to have more money than what they normally would have gotten because they're trying to make up the difference between what they're going to pay in health insurance versus what they're paying now. So, um, it's good to see. Other thing you might see is requests for moving allowance. Uh, on the flip side, there's some things that, uh, they may ask for, like a supplemental, um, living allowance, like if they have to live in a hotel for a while. Last time, now the things you see in italics are things that your previous council said. That's, that's the direction they gave me in terms of negotiating them. The key item that some candidates will ask for is preference package. And that is, let's say, two years, four years from now, a new council comes on the scene and says, you know what? We don't need this city administrator position, let's do it. And suddenly, that person that you hired today is out of a job. A lot of these candidates will look for some kind of safety in them, so they're not without any kind of an income while they're finding a new job. So, we'll talk more about how that works, why some candidates might even ask for it. And then, the other thing we'll talk about is things like performance diaries, paying their dues to professional organizations, paying for their continuing education, so they, you know, they keep learning about what's going on in city government. So, and then, the other thing, some of the candidates may ask for an employment agreement. I don't, but you have one?
I do now. Not at first.
I would say anymore, about 80% of my candidates ask for an employment agreement. So, and you have one, now we have a model to work from, because I'm assuming your city attorney reviewed that. So, we've got a great model to start with, so that's going to be a lot easier to do. And then, the last thing on my list is, if you're willing to pay for the expenses for the individual to come here and an interview, like mileage and, you know, one night stay in the motel and that sort of thing. So, but I don't need answers on any of this tonight, except the salary range. But we will be talking about this in more detail next week, okay?
Okay.
The other thing that we'll ask you to do tonight is the salary range. Well, I gave you a couple different sheets. The first sheet is the salary ranges of positions where I have helped the city fill. It shows you the year that we did the search, the population of the city, the range of the salary that they advertised, and then, the starting salary that was actually provided to the candidate that got the job. And so, and as you can see, they're arranged in the size of the city, all the way from the smallest one I did is town of 405 people, it's in the Quad Cities. Riverdale, to the largest one I've done is Fairfield, Iowa, a town of 9,464. So, the key thing about salary is, it's like a lot of things in life, you get what you pay for. You know, if you want someone with any experience, you're going to need a, you know, going to need a salary range to attract them. If you're willing to hire someone that's fairly new out of college, yeah, you can get by on a lower salary, but you're going to decide that. What I recommend is you have a kind of broad salary range, you know, one end to the other, you know, 15, 20,000 at least, so that we're in the range of someone that maybe is early in their career, unless we give ourselves some flexibility of someone that's got some experience, you know, that you might quite value. So, but we'll come back to that here a little bit later. The other thing I gave you is a survey that the Iowa League of Cities does for the city managers in the state every year. And that shows you the salary ranges of a lot of the cities, but most of these cities are already reviewed. So, you've got to keep that in mind as you look at it. And these numbers are now well over a year old, so that's the other thing you've got to keep in mind. So, but I just wanted to share that with you tonight, in case you need to, you know, come back to that and discuss, you know, what that salary range is going to be. Let's go back to my agenda. Would mine go back to that? Couple preliminary things I need to talk to you a little bit about, and that is, is the ordinance that you have, one, is there any need to make any changes to the ordinance? If you think there is, I would ask you to put on your calendar. This is, if there's anything that needs to be changed to find Zoom, now is the time to do it, not after the person's been hired, okay? Because I will send that ordinance and job description to them to look at, and they're going to apply for this job, assuming that's the job. And so, I don't know, have they seen the job description lately or lately?
No, but the ordinance was amended last year. I think March it was updated.
So, that's fairly recent then, right?
The job description, I don't believe that's updated. Is that a true statement?
I don't know about that.
I think some of the ordinance things were, or some of the job description was added to the ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
Could be, I don't know.
And so, there was a fair amount of change there, and it was really recognizing what we have learned that a city administrator can do since it was a new one.
So, it's not at all unusual for you to redo that job description and update it based upon your experience?
Right, so we've done that, yeah, a year ago.
Okay, so maybe we're in good shape. I'm going to make the assumption that we're good on both of these, until you tell me differently, okay?
Okay.
All right? The other thing is, what do you want this person doing? What are your goals and objectives? And if you look at the profile we did last time, towards the back of it, it's a list of projects that the administrator is going to be working on. One of the things I'm going to be doing when I talk to you individually is, I'm going to ask you that question, what is it they need to work on? And then, we want to make sure that those goals, objectives, projects get in the profile. But we'll talk more about that as you update your profile. So, let's see. Item D, let's drop, we've already covered the timetable. Item D, I'm going to, after we get done here, I'm going to pass around a little, kind of a signup sheet on when to talk, or I can call you and schedule these individual meetings. And I know we've got some basketball coming up, so if you say to me, "This is not the week," I'll talk to you next week when this state tournament's all over with. Which, by the way, I see the Gazette picked Western Duke to win their division in the state tournament, so I don't, I'm sure they're pretty good for the Gazette to pick them as the top team.
That started at six.
What's that?
That started at six.
That's time to get downstairs.
All right, well, anyway, you can let me know what kind of timeframe works for you. I'm going to email you my questionnaire, so if you want to make that, it'll be a Word document. And so, if you want to put your answers on that and then send it to me before we talk, that conversation may only take 10 minutes. But you don't have to. I can kind of go through the questions with you over the phone, and I'll just make my notes. I'm going to leave that up to you. But I've got all your email addresses off the internet, off your website. And the other thing, like I'm going to say, I'm going to pass around the signup sheet. If you have a different email address that you want me to use, maybe note it out there for me. Otherwise, I'm going to use the one that was on the city's website, okay? Let's talk a little bit about item E on citizen involvement. Once again, I don't need an answer tonight. I think the last time we did this, the council, basically, you did the whole thing from beginning to end. Some cities have a reception on Friday night where they invite a few people in to meet their finalists. Other cities, they don't have citizens sitting in on the interviews on Saturday. The most recent one I did in Monticello, they reached out and had four citizens. They had the school superintendent, the chamber commerce director, the economic development, county economic development person, and the gentleman at Camp Courageous director. Those four people were in one room and interviewed the candidates, and then I had department heads in another room, and the council in another room. As we get further into the process, I'm going to talk to you more about that. So, you might kind of give that some thought as to which way, if you want to do that sort of thing. I'm perfectly fine whatever way you want to do it. So, you can let me know when I get together with you on April 13th, if you have any progress on that. And so, you can kind of kick that around with some folks, so. Item F on my agenda, the community and position profile. I think Whitney, have you sent that to them? You sent me what?
It's uploaded, it's within all.
So, take some time to look at that profile. What she did was took the one we did a couple of years ago and updated it, so if you see any changes that you want to make in there, now is the time to let Whitney know. One of the things we've done to save you some money and save me some time is, she's agreed to take that on and update that position profile. Normally, I just, I start from scratch and do it, and if I do want to harry, that's what I would probably do, so. Item G, I kind of introduced you to that pink sheet, but now might be a good time to talk about what kind of salary ranges should we put in this advertisement and basically announce to the world. Whitney, I think you and I have thrown out some numbers as a possible salary range.
Yeah, and I know they have, there's an HR committee that's been meeting, actually kind of preemptively discussed it, so I think.
Hey, you want to go?
Yeah, if I remember right, it was 65 to 125, is that?
Yeah, we're looking at these numbers, 125 might be way out there.
That's probably, for a community this size, you know, but you are growing here, but yeah, 125 would probably be.
110 looks to be about the top, I would think.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at an exation coming in, birds in thunder, that's going to double the size of the town. So, yeah, 110.
70 to 110.
What was the beginning number you were at?
65.
62. That's a pretty broad range, one of the broader ranges I've seen, but that's fine, that's kind of the call, and, you know, it gives us quite a spectrum to look at. I like the idea that you're willing to go up to the higher level, because I'll tell you, it's a candidate's market right now, and it's hard to motivate people unless they can see that, you know, where they're at right now and see that they're going to get a bump in salary, because why take a new job if you're not going to, you know?
Or hoping to get somebody with experience that can just come in and get on your on running.
So, everybody's on board, we'll go with 65 to 110. Did anybody else see anything else in the, on the advertisement that, you've seen this already, Whitney sent that out to you. Anybody have any other corrections or changes that you want to make? Obviously, the posting of the profile, bump that date back a little bit, so give you full more time to get that all done, so. Okay?
Yeah, did I email that to you yesterday? Oh, did you? I think I did.
Did you? Okay.
I meant to, if I did.
I'd have to. So, Whitney and Karen and I will work out the final details on that, and then, we're, like I said, probably Thursday, we'll start putting the ads out and get the ball rolling. So, I'd like to give people at least 30 days to look at the position and apply, give them time to call me, or you're going to find some candidates will actually come here and visit you, and they may not tell you, but they will kind of tour the community. I'm sure they might even stop in the city, and all I know, they'll probably stop in and see this beautiful facility. So, don't be surprised if some of your citizens say, "Well, somebody said they're in a city administrator job, and they were down at Casey's in Parker Fairway or somewhere." But it happens quite often. Item I on my agenda, let's go back to the advertisement. Typically, there's three main places where we put this. The Iowa City Manager, or the International City Managers Association website, that goes out to the whole country. Anyone that's in city administration that belongs to that organization would see this particular ad. It is the only one that costs you anything. It does cost, are you a member, Whitney?
Yeah, yes, yep.
So, if she's a member, it's $450. If she's not a member, I think it's $600. So, it would be $450 to get it out there, but it gives you maximum exposure. The other two are free, the Iowa League of Cities website, that's a good one. Also, the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities website is a good one. And lately here, I've been putting it out there on the Iowa Rural Water Association, because that's free as well. So, I hope for as many of these free ones as I can. Some cities reach out to adjoining leagues, like the Illinois Municipal League or the Minnesota League. I did one down in southern Iowa, and they put it into Missouri. The one that I did in Riverdale, they put it over to Illinois. That's kind of your call. Usually, you're going to pay another $50 to $100, because we're not members of their leagues, so they don't do it for free like the Iowa League does. And so, the only one that might have any value for you would be, but I don't think we.
Illinois or Wisconsin.
Or Wisconsin, yeah, that's another one. Yeah? But I don't think we did that last time.
I don't think we did.
No, so we didn't spend any extra money to do that. If, usually, that International City Management Association is going to catch those. If you said, "We're not going to spend the $450 ICMA," then I would say to you, "Let's do Wisconsin and Illinois," and then. Are you okay with the three, ICMA, the league, and IMU, and then, of course, Rural Water? Are you okay with those?
Counselor.
Okay, all right, that's what we'll go with then.
If I can, just, so the ICMA is how we would get visibility to potential candidates in other states besides Iowa?
Yes, a whole country.
And do those individuals that need to be members of, how do they know to look the ICMA website?
Well, they need to be members, yes. But a lot of times, if they're just getting started, they may go to their nearby city manager, or they may be the city manager in their community, like they might be a department head or assistant, and so, they will be able to access it that way.
Okay.
But it gets you exposure to a lot of different people, yeah. And if they have any interest in this field, they may have a student membership, they may have their own individual membership, if there's any number. For example, I have a retired membership, you know, so there's more than just current city administrators that have access to.
I had an associate membership when I was in Mon, when I was in Monmouth, that's how I saw this job. I was not an administrator, but I was, and now I'm a full member, but then I was just a social.
The other thing I'll be doing is, I kind of know who's looking right now, and so, that's the whole purpose of the profile, I'll be sending them that profile.
And have you ever advertised in like APWA?
I have for public works positions. I helped Asbury pick that, a new public works director. And when it's specific to public works, I definitely go in the APWA. Now, normally, I don't use the APWA for city administration, but I certainly can if you want me to.
I'm just curious, I just know that.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people belong to that.
I haven't checked their website lately, if they have city administrator positions on there. I could take a look and see if there's a city administrator position on there. Yeah, but that's one area where, if you want someone that's experienced in public works, typically, ideally, that's a good one to be on. And I have, over the years, I've had two candidates that made the transition from like a public works director job to city administrator. I've even had a couple cases where they transitioned from police chief to city administrator, so not out of the question, but it's kind of unusual though. But if you want me to, I.
Police chaps already said no.
Okay.
Just curious.
Okay. Any other questions on where we're going to advertise?
Not for me, counsel.
The next, you haven't taken much, the confidentiality, like I said, give that some thought between now and next week, and I will, I'm putting together another agenda like this, and you will see it again, and we'll talk about it in more detail. Or, when we have our private one-on-one conversations, if you want to ask me some more detailed questions about that subject, I'd be more than happy to talk to you at that time, so.
Last time we did it, we kept the confidentiality, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Like I said, the other thing I'm going to do is give you phone calls regularly if you want, watch your emails, and let me know if there's any questions after I send you something. And I'll, like I said, the next time I will back here is, I'll have the cover letters and resumes with me, but I'm going to send them to your emails first. Now, I do ask you, because they're confidential, to be very protective of them. So, we had an incident in one of my last cities, Lurie Air, where the spouse saw that and let the word out that, I know, she had a relative that lived in the town of one of the candidates. So, she called the relative and said, "Hey, did you know that city administrators applied for our job here at Leclerc?" Oh my, I heard from that candidate saying, "What the hell's going on? I thought you had confidentiality." And so, we had a little fire waiting to put out. So, do be protective of them for me, so, because these people are in good favor of lying with the assumption that, you know, that we're maintaining confidentiality as best we can.
When you send them to us, will you rank them kind of the way you feel?
No, I do not. Here's what I do, when I bring them with me the day of 13th, some council members will say to me, "I want to see how you ranked it," and I'll share that with you. But a lot of council members like to just kind of step back and say, "I just kind of like to rank them myself," and then I'll compare them with how you ranked them. So, but I will tell you, here's what I tell councils, there's two things I got to do. I got to make sure you don't pick somebody that's really bad, okay? If you rank somebody high, I think, "Oh, this is disaster." I will tell you that, okay? The other thing I will do is, I think if you're overlooking a good candidate, I will take that. For example, if you were. For example, if you were to overlook Whitney, I would have said, wait a minute, you're missing the boat here. You need to talk to this person. So those are the two things I will do. And I will share with you what I know about candidates too. I've had conversations with them. And you can do your ranking before or after. Occasionally, I have a council member will rank them and then after we have a discussion, they might change one or two. But for the most part, and you will be surprised how, when you all come together and rank them together, the composite score usually matches up very closely to how I see the things. One of you may have someone really high and someone may have, another person may have that person's same candidate very low. I see that, but it all seems to even out in the end. And rarely do I see a situation where I have to call attention to the council and say, you're overlooking a good candidate. And then we'll talk about it and if you want to include the candidate, we include that candidate going forward. Let's see, I think that is everything I have for you. Any questions? Normally, it takes me about, a little longer than this to get through all of this, but you folks have kind of been looking for...
We were unusually well-prepared.
Yes, and you were well-prepared. So Whitney and coaching do, I know. If you have any other questions for me, I'll go back.
I guess I'm going to sound just to be back near the salary range. Is that too big of a range?
It's, if you look at my list, it's a pretty broad range.
Yeah, I mean, do we need to bump the bottom from sixty-five to seventy-five or something or what's?
We could.
I mean, you know, but to look odd too.
Yeah, that's true too.
No, I don't know, thoughts on that? I don't know, you guys, I know that's a, it's a pretty big range and I think you're probably looking at more of the eighty, ninety, a hundred of potentially what we're looking for. Just putting it out there.
I'll look to the HR committee.
I was just the range that, you know, for the whole position as a whole, right? So if you're...
And here's the other thing I can do, you know, we can use that broader range, but when I'm talking to the candidates, they may say to me, oh, it's a pretty broad range, where are we? And I'm going to get a feel from that from talking to you individually and talking during the meetings, so I will be able to say to the candidate, well, yeah, it is from this to this, but, you know, it's probably in this, this range. I can do that. Okay?
Yep.
Good observation. Mike? All right, we're good?
Karen? Karen? Doug? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll stick around a little bit if you have any questions. And then I have that sheet that I'm going to hand out a little bit later on, on when I have to call you.
Okay. That'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will work for all of us. Okay. So that covers six A.
Jim?
Yes, Karen.
Motion on the contract for me?
That's what I was just going to look at here. That is an action item. So... Actual resolution.
It's a resolution. Response.
Response to request for proposal? Okay, so what we're looking for here is a motion to approve proposal with Calhoun. Is it? Calhoun Municipal Consultants.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Do you agree?
Karen, I agree.
My guy.
Motion carries with four.
And here's that little sign-up sheet I've attached from your website. If there's anything different, just make a note on that one. Otherwise, maybe just give me your name and when's a good time to reach out to you, okay?
Okay. While we've got the technical expertise still in the room with us, I would like to go back to the public works. And Whitney, would you be well-prepared to put that map up there on the screen?
Oh, yeah.
So in recent discussions with the comprehensive planning, we've come to recognize that where the comprehensive planning process has proposed a pond and our sewer lines, existing sewer seems to occupy, that is existing sewer, right?
Yeah.
Seem to occupy the same space.
Yeah, to try to quickly bring everybody up to speed and I know Steve didn't, now things get pulled into this. Funny. So this is the line, the sewer line that's going in. Dean and Jake and I have been working on for the annexed territory. This may look familiar because this also is the Waters Edge Pond area. Waters Edge Pond, right now in comp plan design level is like, right there.
Is that, is that sewer line in the grounds?
Nope, nope. It was bid in December, Horace Field got it, he got a magnificent bid, that was six feet under the estimate. It was really bad, it was, I mean, I think...
They think they come in thirty-three percent, hundred?
Yeah, yeah, they came in like two ninety, one ninety-four, twenty-two. So it was great and you know, again, with Waters Edge, the concept got rolled out. And I want to point out though, that these consults were working separately. It was our own lack of planning that put us here. I want to make sure that's very clear, you know? NSA was working, we said that, you know, and then this, you run that thing, we're going to, same thing when RDG was planning, we're like, utilities aren't even here because there wasn't a lot in this area. So we have spent significant time working with both of them and we are in past, I'm completely stuck, yielding to the council coordination. Essentially, you have a sort of conflicting, there's benefits to both ways. So we had a great bid, this is a simple, sewer through bare empty map. The problem is, RDG's position, RDG's position is limited, right? So there's now a sewer line that they would have to, probably can't put pond up, you can't, you know, there's X lines, from a planning perspective, this foils a nice clean sewer. So they are asking us to move the line to the east. This then sends it deeper and I'll try to stay in my lane here, Dean can throw something out when I start. So I don't know, I know that if it goes deeper, Doug, our lead council service, that if we issue a change order that exceeds then twenty-five percent of the cost of the project, it's no longer the same project, we can't change order, we have to re-bid the project. So it really is kind of this architectural planning, you know, concept versus like an engineer. It's a truly awkward thing to, long dilemma to watch happen. And I am just really struggling and I, you know, this is a very important area, this has really like, you know, decades and decades worth of implications. I also don't know if there's a wrong answer, we'll have to do something and then we'll work around that something, that decision that we make. But we also needed to make a decision like yesterday or several yesterday's ago?
Last week.
Yeah, because of course now it's nice and the frost is out of the ground and this wasn't going to be the last project of the season, oh, now it's, they would have a thing like to keep it. So, I mean, we don't have this much either, so we're really kind of up against a wall trying to be true. And RDG, to be fair, is also not at the point that we've asked them to have designs done, right? They're still at comp level, so we're trying to kind of push that timeline along, get information from them, where is the pond going to be, where is the pond not going to be? And they have other steps that they're trying to work through to get there. So it's a little bit of a collision of perfect storm scenarios. So that is why the five members of the PIASTAS and council are going to need help inform this decision, like I said, because they're really just, they're, both NSA and RDG are great and they're good at presenting the benefits of their plan. I will not necessarily want to like be offered really great solutions, so it's kind of...
I'm assuming Cox Springs Road will stay there.
Right. Yep, yep.
I was just thinking, if you did, and I could be totally wrong on it, but if you ran it along Cox Springs, yeah, you might have to go deeper, but at least the manhole is right alongside a road too, where you can, more servicing, better servicing than out in the middle of a field.
We can't go directly adjacent to the road. I mean, it would be considerably deep, like, would be something that, forty feet deep. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's really, I mean, we have really helped us up and looked at it from every single angle, which is not like there's not a great et al. Which is why we're, where we're at. So both RDG and NSA are really just looking at the city telling us to make a decision because we're going to have to set somebody's out.
For the sake of education, please help me understand, what's the impact of having the sewer under the pond?
As a Dean, you want to talk about how it works to maintain a sewer that's under?
Actually, the sewer would actually probably have to be rerouted. I don't think we'd want to put ourselves in a situation where the sewer is actually under the pond. Going through a stream would be one thing, you know, crossing a stream, but I don't think we'd want to put ourselves correctly underneath the pond. And then one thing we'd have to take, keep in mind, and Jacob and Steve could both vouch for me here, you know, the considerable amount of force that's going to be on top of that, that head pressure that's going to be over that. I don't think that's a situation, I shouldn't say I don't think, I know that's a situation we're not going to want to put ourselves in.
You know I had to ask, right?
No, absolutely, that's fine, I'm just, yeah.
I'm assuming if...
Like I say, Jacob and Steve vouch me in, speaking in better, more technical terms.
From a gaming standpoint, it's something you dig that thing up. And the other thing is any little leak that might put, being water above it, it's going to just exacerbate it, sort of less than perfect situations. And that's why I avoid that.
I'm assuming if it breaks, it's going to drain the pond and...
I don't think it would almost instantly.
And right into the septic system.
Yeah.
And it'd make an awesome video.
It'd flush her, it'd flush that drone, maybe.
You wouldn't have to clean the sewer line downstream, it's self-cleaning, that lift station we're talking about, isn't designed to handle that, so, yeah, I don't think that was taken into consideration.
Since we already have the bid and everything, Horace Field and stuff, is there something that RDG can do just to redesign the pond and put in this type of parameter for it?
They can't.
I think that's probably the better path to go between the two of them. You know, since this thing's already done, it's, we got a hell of a deal on it, right? As far as getting the pipe in the ground, we got projects that are waiting for it above it. And this RDG pond, granted, it's going to be an awesome amenity to the city, but it's still in design phase.
Right, and we are going to have to move basically all the dirt for it, no matter where, no matter where it goes.
So if you move it though to the east, does that, can you come to come compromise where they tweak the pond to the west and they're in the lake to the west and they go this to the east a little bit, does it allow that?
And that was originally...
Old?
Dean and I sort of fixed, was just right, hop it, just a little.
Stay within twenty percent?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a tough call considering Horace Field knows how much they came in under, um, under their competitor. So they'll take that in consideration. There will be some minor effects going to the east of the waterway, not saying that it can't be done, but it will put us a tad bit deeper with the sewer line, considering we have to get on the upper side of where that ravine is before it crosses Cox Springs, would have to get underneath that creek level, so would have to get a touch deeper. Therefore, that would, I'm afraid, throw us, that and keeping in mind that they know how much they came under, that, I think that's going to put us over that twenty-five percent.
And some of this is just a little bit of an exercise in awareness. You know, we know Waters Edge is a massive trajectory changing piece for our community. Right, we got a great deal on this, if it goes in and in four years, there has to be something that's rerouted. Again, that's not ideal, but you definitely want to have this conversation so that you guys know we, you know, there are options we explored and, right, and if we re-bid it, we could totally lose our time and time. So it might, you know, it might be that this great bid cost if we move it might be the same as what we're going to pay if we re-bid it anyways. There's just no, so it's hard to know how much it's worth sending back to the engineers, we can do all the whole thing, we've bid it.
So you and Dean came up with any answers?
I mean, our, our only solution that we liked was to just try to move it, even skirt it fairly to the east, but really RDG doesn't, and neither does it.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be enough give and take there to actually, where RDG would accept that fact, but I could be speaking out of terms a little bit.
It'd be good to have a plan that, you know, RDG know exactly where that pond's going to go and then do the rerouting of it correctly, you know what I mean? After that's done, because you're going to be in there digging it all up anyway, or somebody will be, to create the pond, so you're going to expose all that and hopefully you can do some kind of a temporary fix in the line so you can reroute it so the service isn't interrupted above.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, it's a little bit easier to reroute when you, when you speak in terms of rerouting utilities, it's a little bit easier to reroute water versus sewer, especially if we want to keep it in that gravity mode, you know, versus a lift station. So, I mean, that's just one thing that we need to keep in mind when, um, we're tossing these.
And I should say, NSA's position, the pond shouldn't be up that hard, ever. So that's another part of what we're having a little bit of a clash here. There's some different opinions on what the Army Corps is going to allow. They really just, they need a lot more time for their plan to be refined and we don't have it as far as this line.
Was, with the watershed meetings that we had and everything, wasn't it further south anyway, right, right where the water?
Yep, so then the problem is though, that we want to preserve east-west front row connection. That was what really stirred the world's plantings because they have, and also though, is that more of this ground is now developed, or we now know we have an interested, willing, capable developer. So where we thought, oh, we have forty acres here, that's not the case. So we definitely want to leverage the fact that we have a good developer here, so we just don't want to burn this into forty acres of swamp.
So do we look at more like Waters Edges, more than one pond, some other pond?
RDG, yep, absolutely brought that up. So, and if we're looking at that concept, I guess I'm thinking they can design around that. Am I?
Go small pond.
I mean, granted, Steve's an engineer, so we probably know.
Yeah. You know, I, I've been, this dichotomy all the time, architects come up with these great ideas with great papers, figure out how to make it work, that's what's feeling right there. There, there probably is, my opinion, and I know a little bit more about what Whitney has described tonight, is there's nothing driving the size of the pond per se. You want to make it as big as you can because it is in function. Stormwater management is one of the things that we designed to fail, it's just how frequently does it fail, how much acceptable on failure. The bigger the pond, the more, the more protection you're getting. So they'll, they'll work within their monitoring room that you get them. I mean, that's kind of where I landed on this based upon what I know is put the sewer where it makes the most sense and work the pond around. You know, as, as a racehorse field in the end, preserving that bid, you may go tell them, we could go a lot, ask them a lot of thousands of dollars to move this, tell us where we could go. Because they're going to want, they're going to want more money versus zero, versus saying, we want you to go here, then, then you're giving them a blank check. But if you kind of establish some parameters that says, we're willing to use a, put that house down, as much room as we can here, let them tell you that, that's probably the approach you haven't had yet. And maybe it's not enough to be impactful at all, but that, that might help in your decision. I think Whitney's said it, maybe not explicitly, Dean was a little more explicit, you've got pretty much one shot to put the sewer in because it's a gravity pond. So that's, that's, that's an important decision that you made, that's kind of what you're looking for tonight, I think.
Yeah, they're ready to go.
So if you put the pond down below, front row to be, you... So if you put the pond down below, front and road to be used because, that's, that's movable, and you don't want a straight shot front and road going through, through there, there's just gonna be a.
Well, and, and I think that's part of the problems, we keep getting, or we're talking to the consultants, I get sidetracked talking about this, now, we got a lot, ton of work to do between now and then, because we also have sewer line that goes right here, we have a water line that goes right here. Yeah, where that, and that's, in the call we were on, it just got so sidetracked, because then their consultants are arguing about where the front, where, I mean, what's the shape of this and the shape of that, and if the water wouldn't can move it, it's like, we're, we're just not there yet in terms of the planning, all we need to figure out is where the sewer line's gonna go, because again, right, some would say the front and road, for development purpose, it needs to be this, but for safety purpose, it needs to be this, there, there's different shapes that all serve different things, we're just, nobody's agreeing on anything right now, and you can tell it's, it's frustrating.
Well, it's not what they want, it's what we want.
Right, and unfortunately, we're just, they don't even have the information, the plan developed to a point that they can talk to you about it yet, hopefully in a couple months we'll be there, but unfortunately, we're, we're into, um, you know, laying horse wheels and some of those and things like that, so.
So if we leave the sewer, sewer line right where it is and don't design around it, I think that's the option.
It's not easy to make money with RDG.
No, I don't, it, no, it's just gonna limit where their pond design, their pond choices, optional locations are really limited. And I guess in the very worst case scenario, they come back, you know, nine months from now and say, this pond really needs to be right here, I need you to pull out the sewer and put it over here, I, I don't know if that's feasible, but.
And again, it's our decision, not theirs.
Right. Yep.
But you, you, one other option, and I don't know if you talked to Horsefield about this, you guys do have an options side of the contract, they do have the right task for more money if you do so, and so maybe there's, maybe the least amount of cost is, say, give us six months, what does that cost? And advise you some time to vet out pond options a little bit further, and, and maybe that, in the end, that might be the cheapest way to go forward.
But I don't think we have that time, do we, to get them houses hooked up?
I don't think we have six months, I think.
We have to have it in God's hands.
With super.
Yeah.
So.
We don't have six, we might have.
We might have two. But I, and I don't know that you solve the problem in two months, because the year.
Right, it's just, yeah, and I'm really.
It'd just be an oddly shaped pond, it'd be okay, be all right.
It might look like a kidney.
Too, or too long, two ponds, two ponds, three ponds, a bunch of ponds.
I think from a aesthetic standpoint, oddly shapes actually better, and, and this is where I totally have enough knowledge, is what's the minimum volume that they have to have for it to perform, and if we do reduce that, reduce the performance to the point that's what you're wanting to accomplish, and I don't have that.
And here's the issue, is that if the pond goes south, this line has to move, so maybe if we put them both in, if it's north, then that one moves, it's south and this one, we were conceding to move this anyways. I mean, that was, that was part of MSA's plan, right, Dean?
Yeah, and kind of the way I look at it, if we put the pond north, we're gonna have to move the water main. I'd be, I'd be really concerned considering how deep in the amount of water that the pond's gonna hold, and having a, having the, uh, water main that serves the whole east part of our town, um, on the low side of that pond, if it ever were to breach.
But boiling water, then, it'd ruin everything.
So, I mean, there's pros and cons to both, um, both of those visions, I mean. The other concern I have is if we, if we, you know, put the pond to the north, run the road connected, right, to Thunder Valley, it's gonna take a pretty large amount of, um, um, storms or going through that creek there, I mean, pretty, pretty significant, I mean, to take on the challenges of the amount of water that's gonna come through that creek. So, I mean, it's. There's a lot of things to take into consideration there, I mean, it's more than just making, in my eyes, it's more than just making a decision on where you're always a pond, I mean.
I know, that, that's to me where this whole problem's coming from, because we now have a planning, we now have a planning that we never done, so it's not just half the least, uh, previous public works that we gotta integrate and this other stuff, but then they're not thinking about pipe, it's, it's a interesting swirl of interesting dynamic that, I think, I'm not sure, I mean, we have to let her, let me do it.
So there's, a decision needs to be made whether to go forward or not with the existing sewer.
Correct.
And when does that decision have to be made?
Yeah, yes, we have to speak.
Yeah. I mean, the project's gonna improve, it's just a matter of.
Right.
Giving them the reins to go, to move on it.
Well, I'm not sensing from our city administrator or our public works director that we have a clear direction of what we think we should do. Am I reading that correctly?
I don't know if we have any options to put it in where it is, do you?
Rather than to put it in where it is?
Or?
I think it's our best option, but.
It'll be more than the contract, right?
I mean, if you guys got a vision on what, what, what pond to be.
It's not, we're not, the vision's not there every.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, then, I mean, the decision's made, if the vision's not there yet, in my eyes, let's go forward with it, I mean.
Put the pipe in the ground.
Unless, unless everybody minds that, and that would tell me that you have a vision, that's where you want it. That's kind of the way I look at it.
Just carry on, right?
Because there's, like, like you guys mentioned a couple times already, there's gonna be all kinds of undergrounds, if, if the pond goes south, there's pipes gonna have to move, goes north, it's gonna have to move.
I think it's just, that's what, you know, happened when we put this stuff, well, those other pipes, there was no, there was no vision, so it went in straight, the straightest line, because that's.
Has it worked?
That, that ties into the new lift station that we're gonna be putting in then.
This line does, yeah.
Yeah. How long has that line been put in, how very long?
One time.
How long ago was the eighteen inch line, that was just a couple of years?
Yeah, four years ago.
Yeah. Couple of years ago.
Yes.
A little foggy.
For, for the second time.
Is there any thought that when Cock Springs is rebuilt, which will be sometime, is there any thought that it would be shaved a little bit more level, less hilly?
I mean, there's not, I mean, considering that Thunder Valley first phase is now established, there's not a whole lot that can be changed as far as degree. Unless you're gonna change the line. Because otherwise, Thunder Valley, you get to that hill and those houses that sit on that peak, are gonna sit up rather high. You know, in their backyards, if you, if you're looking at dropping Cock Springs down, you know, midway between the bird's property there, where that hill is, you know, that's gonna change that grading, you know, its backyard's pretty.
Pretty drastically.
Okay, I think. So here, okay, I'll maybe add one more conversation with RDG tomorrow, because we really don't see any other path forward at this point except for this.
No, is that where we're at?
We've been trying to, we've been trying to solve this for like a month.
For the sewer line you're talking about, right?
Right, yeah, just for the line, like, yeah, we're.
We'll rock and roll, let Horsefield get to town, get it going, and RDG can, they can design around it, hopefully, come up and sell it.
Yeah, I.
Or not.
You know, because we're a small staff, I've said this before, like, we just, we like having great consultants, we like, we rely on consultants, and we like following the regulations, now they have a fully regulated supply.
He's a tiebreaker.
What's RDG's biggest, I mean, right, it, it is still, it is still a pond, right? I guess when you step back, when you step back.
It's from a planning perspective, the optimal development scenario involves the pond where that line is, that's the.
But nothing's ever.
If it's, if there's gonna be places to have as much developable property around it as possible.
Right, there would be property values, or.
Got it, yep.
They have, I mean, planning, planning.
If you have to shift it to the west, you can do some stuff to the east, right? You'd think that you could.
Yeah, I mean, that, that east part is just a little weird, yeah, there's, again, this is, it's still much more viable than probably the most.
Is it, is it just emotional right now for them, I mean, is it just?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, for, 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 yeah, it's.
No, but I, I know how that goes, right, I mean.
Well, remember, I mean, they both, they competed on the same, for the cop lane, I guess you would agree with that, so you have that too, that they moved bid to cop lane, so.
Okay. So assuming that RDG can get, well, between RDG and MSA, we can get assurance that the pond can be put in a place that is compliant with that sewer as proposed, and still meet its functional requirement, I think that's.
That's a great point.
But they don't, they really don't even agree on that right now, I'm not gonna just say that.
Well, that's, that seems like that ought to be a little bit more black and white, does it meet a requirement?
Because they are, they're, what the Army Corps will allow and what our sponsor project will require are unknowns, and they will not be known until we submit proposals from our.
Right, well, that's what they're claiming to you, that, right now, that can be solved by submitting something, a lot of the.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Or maybe the other.
Yep.
Do we have to submit one design, or can be, can there be two designs, two, two different designs?
Maybe just do a couple.
And we just would have to pay to have that done, basically.
Yeah, right, which I, I think is still probably money you have to solve the problem, because again, I think fundamentally you want a functioning stormwater management system out there, that's first, secondly, you want to look, because there's, you can't, um, and, and it's, if that, if that is, is a permit, um, and they, I think Wendy's point, they're both saying, hey, this is permitable, but this one's not, I have no reason to believe either one of them's right or wrong, but in that case, I call the Army Corps and say, this is what we're doing, you tell me, right, and, and that might, it might take you and I making that call, or somebody else making that call, taking that drawing, and say, we, we need someone to tell us if this is what we're, what we're talking, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars here that we need to, to have some guidance on.
So if I bring in this to the council, you were looking for an appetite to not put that sewer pipe where we had previously planned to put it, I think what I'm hearing here is there's not a lot of appetite for that, at least with what we know as we sit here today.
Right, and that's the difficulty, right, if RDG could say, or if we had any plan that said, this for sure, best place this seems to go is right here, it's legal, it's permitted, it's, it's neat, all boxes, then that would be a different conversation, because we're just not there.
Okay.
They're not there, so.
So I think a follow-up conversation with the parties is appropriate, as you suggest. I am interested in this notion of, let's get an opinion from the Army Corps if we can afford that, by time is what I mean by afford.
Right.
Another opinion seems very helpful at this point, since we've got two parties that can't seem to find common ground.
Might show them both of the designs, both of the recommendations and see, hey, this is.
And move forward, putting the pipe in the ground.
Get the pipe in the ground.
Yes.
But I gotta take care of the people that live in the town.
So we, yeah, we also recognize we've got an October deadline to have that pipe functioning, wherever it is.
Yeah, you don't have a lot of time, right? I, um, I have three staff down in the White City's office that are former board employees, I'm gonna talk to them tonight, yeah, and just see who, who would we talk to, well, it'd be the fastest way through the bureaucracy to try to get some, some guy.
I think that third perspective may be really helpful. Did you get what you needed, Whit?
Yes.
All right. Appreciate the challenge here and your work to try to resolve that prior to tonight.
Yeah.
You as well, Dean. All right.
Grab my sheet.
Oh, yes, sir.
Out of your, break.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Um, Pat, do you want to just give John Kraft a call directly, Pat?
What's that?
Do you, do you want to just give John Kraft a call directly, he's not here tonight, but he needed to be on there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll come back.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for coming and joining us tonight.
Yeah, I enjoyed it, thank you.
I think we're getting there, do we want to kick the administration items after the public hearing then?
Oh, no, let's just. Yep.
They should be quick, so continuing in the order we've got, we will move to item sixteen, college suites building permits. Uh, this is looking for a motion to approve, right?
Correct.
I'm gonna motion approve it. Doug I.
Ken and I.
Jerry and I. Mike I.
Motion carries with four. Next up is the Casey's marketing sign permit, similar action needed.
And this is just a.
They're rebranding, so they're just repeating their minds.
I make the motion to approve Casey's permit for their signs.
My second.
Doug I.
Ken and I.
Jerry and I. Mike I.
Motion carries with four. Okay, and we get to the public hearing, so this is with regard to Highway twenty lift station reconstruction project.
About the.
Yeah, supplement of the ordinance.
About D.
Table that for a while.
Sorry, I skipped right over that, thank you for, for, be true to the agenda, we've got the supplement to the Fiesta Code of Ordinances. We've had a chance to look at that, is there any need for discussion on that, other than, um, let's see, there were two questions.
There were two questions on the portable storage container chapter, whether the council wants that or not, and as I looked through that again today, that would require, it looks like to me, construction trailers be on the lot where the, um, the home is being built, which is a complaint we get quite frequently, that they're on the street, correct, like?
I'm sorry.
Construction trailers?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So that might be a good thing, but then the other thing that I noticed is there, it doesn't allow, people, people a lot of times move, use those pods when they're moving in and out of their homes, and it doesn't allow for a pod to be placed and giving them a set number of days, so I guess, um, I'd like the council to think about that a little bit, how you want to proceed with that, and whether or not you want to keep the recreational vehicle chapter, those two chapters were the new ones.
So can you, can we add to that then, provide them pods to be sort of?
We could, um, they just took it from their model code, so I would talk to Marla about adding a section about, you know, a person moving in or a person moving out, the number of days, and it also has to be on their property, not in the street, those types of things, so, if that's something the council wishes.
I think so.
So there's two ways we could go about that, we could adopt it as proposed here and then come back and change it, if we wanted to add a different clause, right?
Correct.
Or we could not adopt it now and just.
Correct, I, I would rather have it be, like, all together, that it's updated and current, and they may look at that as wanting to do that with their model code as well too, it just might be a little bit more efficient. Do you have anything on that?
What's the one about the recreational vehicles?
Street parking.
Uh, street parking?
No, it just says you can't live in them.
Can't live in them.
Oh, unless, unless you're in a campground, and we would have to specify the number of days, there's a blank.
What was the first one paired on the, on the?
The pods.
There's no.
The construction trailer. So in that ordinance on the portable storage container, a construction trailer would be considered a portable storage container as well, and that's what the, uh, what the ordinance actually addresses is those tied to building permits, they have to be off so many days after the construction is complete, or, but what we have issues with is more, uh, the construction trailers being in the street blocking traffic.
Okay, so it's not, they're doing something on the project, it's more storage lightweight, if it's on the street.
Correct, correct.
I'd have to go with that.
Trailer sit and.
Okay, got it. Can we table it and add the pods and then bring it back, or what's the best, is that what you recommend?
That's what I would, but I guess on those pods, I'd like a number of days, you know, do you want it to be five days, do you want it to be seven days, no more than seven, what's your feeling on those for moving ins and moving outs?
Oh, I always just use a moving company.
If it's, if it's, so by this ordinance, if they have it, it would need to be on their property, not in the street.
Correct.
Um, I don't know that we need to make that particularly tight. I might suggest two weeks be, so that we don't have an issue. We don't have a history of this being a problem when it's on people's property.
No.
The pod would have to be in the driveway, or in the yard?
On their yard.
Do we have any relevant benchmarks around us?
One, yeah. Well, Val had a pod when she moved, and I want to say, no, we don't have any, but five days. It was a fair enough.
Yeah.
And if you say.
You could do five days, and then, you know, you could be up to the city to give a little bit of variance if they need. They can come to me and say, give me another extra day, and I can work with them on that.
Right, the enforcement is also under our discretion.
I'd give them seven days, that way you cover a weekend.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
They're waiting for help.
I wouldn't do more than that, though. I mean, they would come and ask for variance, excuse me.
But seven days of cover of, like, it's somebody waiting for family to come help.
Okay, well, I'll, um, talk to Marla tomorrow, and we'll get something added into that, um, ordinance then. I'll order for seven days.
So that would, so we'll have something about that, that's in the portable storage containers. On the recreational vehicle one, if we're gonna move forward with that, we would need to specify the number of days we would like, as a maximum number of days uh, that it could be occupied. When it's in a campground or a travel park within the city limits.
Which we do not have.
Which we don't have any of right now.
So can we track that out, or just leave it in there?
You could leave it in, put sixty days or something like that, because you don't have a campground. I can ask for that question.
It could always change later.
Okay, is that everything you need, Karen?
For now, yes.
All right, so we still need a motion to approve?
No, well. Yeah, you can either make a motion to table it, or we'll just put it on, however you feel.
We'll just put it on the next agenda.
So to be clear, we don't need a motion to table it?
Correct.
All right. Double checking, that's all of the administration. We can go to the public hearing. Uh, this is for the Highway 20 lift station and the forced main improvement project.
It's motion open, public hearing.
The main roll, the public hearing, sorry, Doug. Open.
So we will open the public hearing for this. We've got two members of the public here in the room, and it looks like one online. Does anybody have anything they would like to say with regard to the Highway 20 lift station project? We will wait long enough to see the clock tick one minute.
Well, I'll speak right now, since you're probably all wondering, the West Wind's up thirty twenty-seven right now, a close to an half minute.
Watching it, we can't compete.
All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Doug, I.
Karen, I.
Doug, I.
Motion carries with four. And then following right on the heels of that, we have that same project, uh, we would look for a motion to approve the bid. I'm sorry, no, misspoke.
You're right.
Do you want to table this, right?
I would, I'd like to make a motion to table it to the next
We have time to do that? The answer is yes, you have time. But just to be clear, what? Is it gonna change our direction? What, while we did, what would you like to, what information, more information would you like for the next two weeks?
The information I'd like is I'd like to know their past history on, like, the job site itself.
Sure.
How they maintain it, and the other one is I'd like to know what their history is on change orders.
So we'll, like Jacob said, we have four active projects, with them, we have more another close, with these formal community would be one of them. What we would do is follow up with the community side of things. You have kind of our opinion, but as the engineer, but I, I think what you're asking for, Doug, that would be, uh, we would have the tangible, how many change orders. Uh, but we'll, we'll also ask the communities their opinions as well.
It, it, it just scares me when they come in lower, and then they know what the, how, how much money they left on the table.
Right, so one, one suggestion we had from one of our senior engineers was actually ask them, especially in the situation where maybe not everyone's on the same page with awarding them. Would you like to get out of your bid? There's a, you know, they want to, there's a financial penalty to them, but if you want to get them, get, let them out, you could waive that. I don't know if that's what you want to do or not, because there is a financial implication to go to the next loss bidder. I still, my recommendation would be awarded or not. Not try to fight on the narrow ground, because I think you're opening yourself up potentially for losses, so. I'd choose one direction or the other, and not, not try to get to the second, little bidder. Even if that would be my preference of who I'd work with, but.
And, and like I said, I, you know, I don't know if they're good or bad, I've never heard of them, that's what just makes me very, you haven't heard of them. That happened to me, we, we took a low bid, and they was about four hundred thousand lower than everybody else, while by the time the project was done, it was, they got that four hundred thousand back out of change orders, because they knew that they left too much money on the table.
Unfortunately, there's nothing really can do, is what it sounds like, right?
More field, and more field came in way under the same, we're in the exact same situations.
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about what they left on the table, I mean, that's their problem. Yeah, they're gonna look for change orders, I mean, that's just, that's just pretty much proper standards, you know, when you look to recoup some of the loss. I mean, obviously, you can talk to about every contractor in the area. Quite some distance. I could probably show you a list of ten contractors that called me today, and there was obviously only three bidders on the project, so. I mean, it's more, it's more negative feedback from, from the contractors. And it's not just the ones that are bidding. But that's your guys' decision. You want to approve the contract, I'll deal with them.
Well, we'll take the two weeks, and we'll try to put some stuff. We can click second, we can click second, we'll put it into writing, into a format, you guys can digest, and we'll get it to you before.
Well, I mean, council's still gonna roll, roll mine, because no one seconded, so.
My thoughts, if we wait until phase two, they might drag their leg a little bit, as far as how aggressive they're gonna be on bidding phase two. If they know they have this project for sure, they're probably gonna be pretty aggressive on phase two. If not, they may step back a little bit.
But we jeopard, we could potentially jeopardize our project, is what I'm scared about.
Well.
But, I mean, I guess this is a rule, if we can get to next week, we'll see if it's not.
Yeah, I don't know who's jeopardizing the project, I don't know, we, they bring up. I mean, their bid, they have to honor their bid, they have a bid on, it's thirty forty-five days, so the, that, that number is good until, what, the middle of the day? So. Your actual meeting, the whole hours within, you know, I mean, days, but it, it, it would still be more. I don't, you know, the information you're asking for, Doug, we can get that. I don't know if you're finding anything that really changes anything, but I don't, I don't know that for sure. You know, like, like I said earlier, I've worked with good contractors, I've worked with bad contractors, thankfully, I've only ever had to go into two where we tried to disqualify, and they, they better both ended up at court. Um, and you just try to grind through it, and if, if you end up awarding them the contract, I'm not all that concerned about the project, being honest with you. I'm, I'm more capable handling these, more than capable handling Karen, be more than capable handling, it will be us that have to bear the burden of, of the contractor, the project. So it's gonna be more procedural than anything. But we've all done it, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question or two on this bid? So Jacob, I see you've, you've managed this.
Yeah.
Um, when I, when I compare across the bids, if I go line by line, what I was looking for is instances where Boomerang was substantially less than both of the other bidders. And I only find that on three lines. So one of them is erosion control, whereas the other two are looking at ten or eleven thousand, Boomerang is estimating, or bidding twenty-five hundred. What is it about the nature of erosion control that makes it feasible to be that much below the other two data points? Can it be done for twenty-five hundred?
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's, and percentage-wise, it's a big difference, fair, but dollar-wise, it's not. I mean, they have to assume, the contractor assumes a number of hours and hours to maintain that control, it rains. How long to let twelve minutes fix it? It's, it's strictly a risk that they take, uh, with that number, so I would say that the difference is probably strictly related to the assumed risk that they take.
Thank you. So the other one where it's the same question is number one point zero, the eight-inch force main in place. They are substantially less than the others.
And that would be probably to be explained before, we have two local contractors that are aware of the area. He is not as, as local, it will be wet, it will be a challenging construction. Not difficult, just challenging, and that's, I would say that's probably the difference. Would you guess that, Dean?
Yes, absolutely.
So in that scenario, if we were to award to Boomerang, and they get in and find that there's, it, it's more complicated, uh, that there's other mitigation needed, how does that play out per the contract? They find that they have to invest more than they planned.
That's their loss.
Change order.
Enterprise Drive, we got in.
Not a change order.
Don't try.
It caused so much more rock because of the, because it was so wet.
Pardon?
And that erosion control probably falls into that, too, that's why I said about the rock.
But I mean, contractors are gonna toss some numbers, whatever way, I mean, both of them like to make them pretty much comparable, I mean, but it's no different.
But on Enterprise Drive, we paid a huge amount of difference because of the rock, because that was so spongy.
But, and, and I.
So there, there's another prime example. So you do a street project, they put a low dollar, hour on the initial cost of the rock installation.
And then we had change.
But then they got a significantly high number on soil stabilization versus another contractor. And they still come in low, but they know that, they know the conditions, they know the soils, they know there's gonna be. So they put a higher number on the soil stabilization, and they put the rock in, the initial rock they put in for nothing, basically.
So how's this kind, how's this read on the bid? Are they allowing extra for rock, or they, or is what they, what they're given is what they can get? Like, if they go over the amount of rock they're saying they're gonna use, are they gonna come back to us with a change order?
You already said, they're not gonna need more rock.
There's no street project, they may need more rock, but that's at their cost.
Is it at their cost?
Yeah.
This is betting and, and stabilization at their cost, as long as everything's incidental, as far as the deep water.
That's what I was trying to understand, is for a change order, if they, for a change order, there has to be some kind of a change to precipitate the change order, right? And, and something being, taking longer than you originally anticipated is not a change that it, that precipitates a change order.
Absolutely, and, and, and in this case, maybe the contractor says, comes to us and says, it's wetter than you thought it was, and we'll say, sorry, you had your opportunity to do your minimums as well. Um, and they have to honor that price, I mean, that's not, that's not a change order worthy thing.
So the third and final one that I'll ask about is your, uh, interpretation of the lift station improvements. That's the other one where there's a significant difference in the bid amount, makes up the majority, I think, that one, of the difference between.
That one, I think probably is worthy of investigation there. When you do a, some, uh, my head like that, which it's the easiest way to do a project like this, is just say, hey, here's the lift station, go build. Uh, to see that type of spread. I don't know, I mean, I will kind of pair it with D set before, a lot of times the contractor kind of knows what the number is they want it to be, they'll kind of back into it, the reverse engineer to distribute their cost and the lineups that exist there. Um, that one, you know, absolutely will raise my eyebrows as well. But there's, there's a significant amount of labor in it, too, and that might be worth changes as well, some differences, too, but I, I think as part of our vision, two weeks, that's probably a, a, a side on our part. I think that's a little bit lying, you were there versus somebody else, let, let them tell us.
Yeah, on all the other ones where they're, they're lower, there's, there's another, one of the other two is also in the same ballpark, so to me, that, that, I don't question the feasibility.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I don't question the bid. I mean, I think the bid is pretty good. Uh, I, I knew that they, when, when he texted me and said they were low, I knew that they were probably getting really good price because of all the contractors. It doesn't scare me that they're, that they're playing games, there's nothing in here that says, hey, they're, they're gonna do a lot of business because of the number they have here. But here's their numbers, they will try to change order, that doesn't mean they'll get change orders. I mean, and everything is as they anticipated, everything is as being painted out there, there's no basis for a change order. Now, they're, they're, they're could find something that we didn't know, and absolutely, they're entitled to change order, that one would need to be negotiated, they still have to be fair with their price.
Right.
Um, and, you know, again, I've done this a lot of time, we're, we're put in an interesting role, an instructional, we, you're paying us, but you're paying us to be fair. And that will, will wait, sometimes we have to tell you what you don't want to hear, because this is fair for the contract, more, more times than not it's the other way around, but. But we have to try to re, be, or maintain the status of social, try to be really fair and, and objective in evaluating those things. And, and the same token, they're, they are committing to be fair as well to you, and you, you to them, so. Doesn't always go that way, you know, but that's the point of what we have to start.
I, I, I will withdraw my, to table it for two weeks, but I want them to know that they got one council person that is one hundred percent against a change order unless it's not their fault. I'm not gonna pay for more rock, and I ain't gonna, it's not our problem, it's wet, and they have to deal with it, that, that's their problem.
I'm asking you to reconsider that, Doug. I think what you're asking for is a reasonable piece of information, I think. I think one of you two weeks is not a big, let me get that, because I, I like to know that myself, do they have a history of a lot of change orders? But I would tell you that there's generally more to that story. Change orders aren't always, in fact, I would hesitate to say maybe not most of the time the contractor's fault. It's the engineer's fault, or it's just happens, conditions change. You know, we, we put together plans, and that's the information that's available to us, and sometimes that's not the picture, and in that case, again, there's a fairness to it. Um, let me get that, but I, I, I like where you're coming. I'd also like to have, with, with one of our, that same senior, so you're supposed to, let's have a pre-award interview with the contractor. You're welcome to come, actually, I have proof, um, we have them sit across the table from us, and we ask those questions. And we say, before we sign this contract, these are the things I'm worried about, and I want you to tell me why I shouldn't be worried. Not buying, the contract is the contract, but there's something to be said, in my opinion, for looking a man in the eye, a woman in the eye, and say, give me your word, because I'm already worried. You know, it's kind of putting him on notice. It's just for the record, it's thirty-four, thirty-four, two seconds.
Oh, it's over time.
This one did go.
Yeah, bye. So we got a table.
Till the twenty-third.
Do we have a second to table?
I just don't know what we're going to gain off of that. I mean, other than just more knowledge. Was it two weeks? I don't know.
No second. That motion will fall off without support. We would need another motion. And we've also heard at least a suggestion that we have a pre-award bid, or pre-award meeting. That as part of that.
And that can be part of this motion then?
Yep.
And they can still back out, if they correct? Or if, if, if...
They, they can't back out unless you want to let them back out. They can back out, but we will cash their, their bid on, which is an amount of ten percent of the bid. Five percent? Five percent. So you got, you know, fifty thousand dollars that you would achieve if they chose to not honor this.
I'll make a motion to accept Boomerang with that pre-acceptance meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Doug I.
Karen I.
Jerry I.
Mike I.
Carries with four.
You also have a second, I assume. You will have an official pre-destruction cabinet stall or goals on this. The specifics of the contract as well.
So that, be specific.
Now for motion approving.
Correct.
Listen, please.
With?
Pre-award meeting.
Pre-award.
Subject to a pre-award meeting.
Okay, so let's be clear about how that ordered.
Motion by Jerry to accept the Boomerang bid subject to pre-award meeting.
Okay.
With the contract with an engineer.
Is that what everybody voted for?
Yes.
And then the next one is the resolution approving the highway lift station and force main improvement project contract.
What do we do there?
You're basically approving the bid and the resolution is to award the contract. So it's procedural.
So for approving the bid subject to a pre-award meeting, do we?
Table this.
Table this until after the pre-award meeting?
I would. I don't think that's going to...
Yeah, I would, I would not make it subject to it as much as just it's something that's done right and proper. Because I think you're conditioning the award at that point. And if you want to condition the award, then I would table the award. But it's certainly reasonable to say, we're going to award this, but we want to talk to them before. This is essentially what you said. So instead of subject, you just say, whether.
And then table this until after that?
With a pre-award meeting.
Yeah. And that allows us to get our early, and early stuff.
I'll make a motion for approving the bid contract with Boomerang.
I'll second.
Doug I.
Karen I.
Jerry I.
Mike I.
Carries with four. Last citizen comment? We still have two citizens in the room and one online. Is there anybody, wish to press the council before we adjourn?
Yeah, what's the score now?
What's up?
What's the score now?
There you go.
All right, we can take the motion to adjourn and go see...